Executive session of the Wayne Board of Education Public Work Session of November 7th, 2023, was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 15 Ellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. Statement of compliance setting for date, time, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Roquel was taken, the meeting was recessed, and is now being convened. Ask everyone to please stand for a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
My flag is allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Dr. Toback, out here.
So I know there's a number of committee meetings that were held this evening, and in order to avoid duplication, we keep my report fairly brief, but I would like to talk to the board and also just let the community know there's some really exciting things that you can find online about Wayne. And so one of the things, if you Google "top places to live in New Jersey," you'll find a travel and leisure article, and the travel and leisure article basically identifies the top 10 communities to live in Wayne. So it says, "So to narrow down your search for the best place to live in New Jersey, you reach out to experience local real estate experts." So it's the real estate experts who identified the hottest real estate markets in New Jersey. Okay? And so if you roll along and start from Jersey City, work your way down, but in the state of New Jersey, Wayne is listed in this article as the number seven hottest real estate market in New Jersey. And the reason I bring that up here is it is this town of Say County has a very high-ranking school system, which is really nice to see, and that's the basis for the ranking, Wayne at number seven. So that is really assurance for the Board of Ed and the community, the school system remains an anchor for the community. So that's really exciting news. What I'd like to do is ask Mrs. Reichman, if she could take a minute, provide the board with an update about our parent-teacher program that we presented and targeting. So if you could just maybe tell the board a little bit about where that's headed and some of the positive things we've heard back already.
Sure. At our last meeting, we had a presentation from Montclair State University to talk about this partnership with Wayne School, the U.S. Department of Labor, and Montclair State University, and as being, Montclair the first institution of higher education in the state to have a teacher-registered fellowship program, and Wayne to be the first district to partner with them. We're so excited. We put out a survey to our parent professionals and our substitutes to just see what the interest is. Today, it was notified that there were 58 people who responded to the survey expressing interest. Forty-three of those individuals already have a bachelor's degree and would be eligible to go right into the alternate group program and get a certificate of eligibility.
Forty-three? Wow.
And then we had 14 who have an associate or close to it. So tomorrow, I will be sharing that information with these individuals about their participation in the Montclair State information session where they'll get all the details. So it's looking, we're very optimistic that we will get lots of great and highly qualified teachers out of this partnership.
So what I'd like to do is just talk about some news around the district. First of all, Jets center Conor McGovern posted the wrap-up of his ABLE All-Inclusive E Program, which provides a physical education experience for special needs students and their parents. The event was held at the Jets training facility, 40 of our students were able to attend. Wayne and Roxbury Physical Education teachers, one of the squad of Conor McGovern and his teammates, worked with students in a variety of activities based on the ABLE program. At the event, McGovern also announced that four lucky students who attended will be attending the next Super Bowl this upcoming February. Those tickets are paid for by Conor McGovern and the Jets organization. It's a very exciting thing. I'll let you know if any of our students want to attend.
Of course.
The Department of Education notified us that our grant application for high-impact tutoring was approved, and we will receive $460,000 in funding to support tutoring programs for our students. As we described before, the allocated funds will be used for district staff support and to secure tutoring services off-campus. So you'll find a related action item on tonight's agenda for procurement of outside tutoring services. The subject action authorizes the business office to utilize competitive contracting process for the selection of a vendor. Staff will be working on requests, bid documents in the next few days, and when finalized, they'll go out in a day or two. I'd also like to just take a moment to talk about in the resolutions, Public Work Session 09, item 09, and this is a significant withdrawal from our capital reserve amount in the amount of $4.355 million. This is a very important step for the Board of Ed to continue to prepare Preakness School for an eventual transition to a fully operational elementary school. In this case, the funding will be used for work that's essential to maintaining the structural integrity of this hundred-story building, and involves window replacement, lits will repair, pointing, and roof replacement. The work is in addition to the planned refurbishment and restoration of the existing interior instructional spaces on the top floor. So this paves the way for that part of the building to be nearly complete, and will be able to accept students and operate as a pre-K through five school. So that's exciting, and we're on our way to be prepared for whatever the future holds. As far as the business office goes, they're preparing for the onsite visit from our auditing team, as they continue to prepare the district's annual audit. The external auditors have been reviewing information in their offices and plan to visit the district this week, starting, oh, I'm sorry, starting on November 13th. Also, some exciting things in our next newsletter, so there's a number of really great articles about our students and staff. First of all, one of the articles is about Wayne Hill's environmental science teachers, Mr. Martino and Ms. Malik's class, are fostering northern diamondback terrapins, which are on the decline in the state of New Jersey. They will be fostered in the classroom until June, and then once June rolls around, they'll be brought back to the Jersey Shore, where they hope they will live their own life. So it's a very nice article about some of the things our students are doing. Also, Sunday, October 29th, the Wayne Valley High School Marching Band, Turtle, led by senior drum major Andrew Slavin and junior drum major Zoe Jerkin, traveled to the Colts of New Jersey and won the Class A state championship. So Wayne Valley finished in first place out of the 11 bands that were competing, and they also won Best Overall Music and Best Vision. So finally, my HIV report, and reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Wayne Township School District. There have been 11 incidents of HIV that have been investigated since my last report. Six of those cases were deemed to be actual cases of HIV. Would you please write it?
Mr. Moffett? Uh, revisions to the Jeff case?
Yes, we have a few tonight. Under T Emergent Human Resources, we'll add, actually revised to number two, approval of leave requests. That's revised number two, ID number 9958, George Washington Medical School, start date of sick bank from October 17th, 2023, to October 13th, 2023. Revised number 13, ID number 3585, SCMC, start date of sick bank from 11/323 to 10/27/23. We're adding number 16, again, to Emergent Human Resources, number 16, approval of termination for good cause. That is going to read, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent approves the following termination for good cause. ID number six, uh, four six, excuse me, ID number 4860, driver transportation, PC number That's from account number 11, triple zero two seven zero one six one dash five one dash zero zero seven, salary of $33,895, effective date December 1, 2023. Also adding number 17, approval of administrative leave. That action reads, resolved at the Board of Education, upon the recommendation, superintendent approves the following administrative leave. Staff number ID 4860, driver transportation, PC number 71-06-18-backslash-DRY. Account number 11, triple zero two seven zero one six one dash five one dash zero zero seven. Date of paid leave is November 2, 2023, to November 30, 2023, that's an administrative type. We're also adding number 18, approval of second medical option, excuse me, opinion. That reads as follows, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves Dr. Anthony DiMarco to perform a neurological psychiatric, psychiatric examination of employee ID number 2235 at Board of Education expense, and the written report detailing the result of such examination is to be provided confidentiality to the board within 30 days of this date, November 2, 2023. Add number 19, approval of termination of job abandonment. That will read as follows, resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following termination of job for job abandonment. Staff ID number 9100, custodian RC, PC number 50-01-44 slash CBY. That's from account number 11, triple zero two six two, 100-50-006, salary is $58,820, effective date is November 2, 2023. Under B Emergent School Resource Finance, we'll add number four, approval of carryover amendment, and that action reads, whereas the Board of Education upon the recommendation of superintendent, excessive federal grants in the amount specified below, an approved carryover amendment for funds received in 2022, 2023, for the 2023, 2024 grant budget as follows, and that amendment is a carryover for IDA Part B Basic, which is not public allocation, and that amount is worth $7,002. Effective, please, revisions to the line.
Thank you. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comments on agenda items only. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board, there is no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight, or at subsequent meeting under all this. Do I have a move? Although, second, please, Mr. Giselle. Anyone from the public on agenda items? Committee, the number of committees who've met?
The Finance Committee met yesterday, November 1st, at 5:32. It was attended by Mr. Pavlik and myself, and administrators, Mr. Moffett and Mrs. Lightick. There were no change to the October 3, 2023 minutes, so we approved those. There were no questions from the board members on the agenda items, so we went through the financial reports for September 2023. Notable on the contracts, Zebra Pay will start January 1st, in order not to mess up with the 1099s. I went through the transportation agreements. As Dr. Sowak mentioned, the capital reserve withdrawal for Preakness School, and there was a $200,000 capital reserve withdrawal for new, well, we're approving, we're looking to approve a $200,000 withdrawal for the new plastic building cost. Emergent checks, emergent comprehensive maintenance plan was what we went through. Also, as Dr. Sowak mentioned, we talked about the competitive contracting with the high-impact We discussed this new or revised policy regulation review for Policy Number 8500, where 8540 and 8550 will be abolished. Those are regarding food service and school nutrition programs and meal charges for food service bills. We discussed the RFP for the Realtor. There will be an RFP for the Schindler property. The request for proposal will be accepted until November 15th at 11 a.m. It can also be accepted electronically. As far as the rod grants, there was nothing new there, nothing new on the SDA, Early Childhood Center. For the referendum updates, they received a binder, and basically, they are looking through, and feedback is requested now, so they're definitely looking at those now. Previously mentioned, the long-range plan. We will also be adding, well, we'll be looking to add a Roth 403B option for the district employees. We received $40,000 from Special Olympics for the Unified Sports, which was a little less than years prior. We talked about the provision that was just mentioned for the IDA grants. We also discussed that the auditors will be coming in November 13th, just as Dr. Sowak also mentioned, and the business office is moving in. We reviewed the timeline for that, and yes, so, yeah, we want to go forward, approving the comprehensive maintenance plan. As I mentioned earlier, that needs to be filed by November 15th into the county office. How's it?
Just be a short one. The Education Committee met tonight. Present were Mrs. Wintick, Mrs. Rigoloso, Mrs. Reichman, and myself. We approved the October Education Committee minutes. We reviewed three policies and regulations for renewal, and the big one was the updates in the chemistry curriculum, which are designed to realign better with AP testing, so the more difficult components of the curriculum can have more time working on it before the AP date. And for APs, we're always a month behind because most start August around the country, so they jump out the gates a month behind to begin with. So making these kind of changes really does help out with the AP testing, and that was our meeting. Are we moving for the agenda?
Although.
Mr. Tal, Mrs. Rigoros, any discussion on the agenda? Roll point. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just got a question. On the Unified Sports, I think we started this three years ago, maybe? We started off with a grant from Special Olympics for $125,000. The following year, we were down to $75,000 because it figured our initial costs were covered, and now it's just a matter of maintenance, and now we're down to 40. So my concern is, this is going to now have to come out of the general fund, and I just want to put it out there to the public that this is something that we'd be happy to take from the community on, to continue these wonderful sports programs, sponsorships, however we want to make a donation to this cause, I think it would be a worthwhile endeavor for our students, because, again, you know, this was started with 100% grant money, and that's drying up pretty quickly, and it may even come to zero. So that's a very important population and a great program, and I'd hate to see it this year.
You have comments?
So that's a feasible item, I assume, to have sponsorships in this program? Don't know.
It's allowable, but we'll process it.
Yeah, donations are much appreciated.
Always welcome.
Fairies. Fairies, pay attention. Sponsorships requested. Thank you.
Mr. Tal?
Yes.
Mrs. Jerdan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mr. Prusakos?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlik?
Yes.
Miss Portman, the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. Board, there is no responsibilities for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight, or at subsequent meeting under all this. Do I have a move?
Although, second, Mr. Tal, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am Ken Woodhour. I live on 15 Andover Drive. I have my son in Lafayette. I am speaking today about what's happening in the world and how I'm supposed to help. Since my child has been attending school in Wayne, I've seen many examples of this board being extremely reactionary to serious circumstances involving the welfare of our children. Bullying, drop scores, so many things that we wait to see what happens. Today, I'm begging the board to be proactive and set me up against hate speech. Now, there's a clear difference between free speech and hate speech, and also there's a difference in how people of different ethnicities, cultures, and political affiliations interpret what is being written, displayed, and said in our schools. But today, I speak to a Jewish parent who's watching the rise of antisemitism and hate speech in our grade schools, our high schools, our universities, places that we used to consider safe for our children. We cannot wait to react to antisemitism or hate speech of any kind towards any group. Both the Wayne Council clergy and myself, representing over 250 members of the Jewish parents of Wayne, have asked the superintendent to simply change blocking political image in the school's profile pictures. Right now, the school-owned profile pictures are allowed to have any picture, but these profiles do not fall under free speech. These profiles are owned by the school. You can easily make the profile pictures a list of approved pictures that children can choose from, or you can just remove the pictures. This is one small change that would harm no one and would show everyone that the Board is, the Board of Education, is taking the first, hopefully, many proactive steps in protecting our children. You all see what is going on in the world today. We are afraid. Stop waiting to see what happens, and please start implementing changes for the safety of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rabbi Mayor Gerke with the Chabad Center, 194 Hasar Road, here in Wayne. I stand to rise here as a representative, as a rabbi here in the community, for the Jewish community, and as was just mentioned, some people say hate speech, some people say free speech, and whatever the legal ramifications of that is, I have one sentence for you. I don't care. If somebody walked into school with an image of KKK or a Confederate flag even, probably, that wouldn't last more than 24 hours. If there are students, we see what's going on in college campuses now, and you can call that anti-Zionism from today to tomorrow. It is clear, unabashed, unveiled antisemitism. That's what it is. And colleges trickle up from the theaters, those are the high schools, those are the middle schools. That's where it all trickles up from. If we do not show our children what antisemitism is, and we say there is free speech, you know what? Why don't we just tell them, "I don't care"? Because you can be antisemitic in the United States, that is protected. You can be anti-black in the United States, that's also protected. You could be anti-C, you could be anti-ism, you could be anti-whatever you want, that's all protected, but guess what? The public will shun you. The public will not stand for it. You're allowed to be free however you like, but it doesn't mean that the public has to agree with you. And the administration, and the teachers, and the principals should say antisemitism is absolutely unacceptable at any moment, on any platform that has to do with school. That means walking into school with it, that means on a, on a school form with it, digitally, or on hard paper, whatever it is, antisemitism is absolutely banned in public schools. And we can just say one thing, we don't care what you think otherwise. Antisemitism is not allowed in our schools.
Anyone else from the public who should speak? Any old business? Any new business? Board member comments?
And so for our first speaker, if you'll notice on the executive session, the board did have a discussion about accepting the new policy, technology in the district. And so we'll be moving ahead with an analysis of how we can institute some changes that will make sure that our students are not exposed to anything expectly, whether there are generic images, things like that. So it's something that we'll be working on, or just something that the board is willing to move ahead with.
I just wanted to, thank you. Do you have timing on that? I don't know if I'm allowed to ask questions.
So I.
I'll let you go. Give me over three.
Okay. So there's a procedure for changing board policy, so it's not just something I can do and say, change will happen immediately, but it is something we have to work toward. So there is a proposed policy that will be developed, and there is a policy that will be reviewed for our next meeting, and the following meeting, there would be, there are asked for two votes on it. Okay? So the next two, the next two meetings, a policy will be.
We're talking too much, though. I'm just afraid of what will happen in this conference.
We're talking one.
Okay, okay. Give me somebody where I can speak. You can speak, Dr. Toback.
After me.
Okay. I'm new to this.
That's okay.
So it's not a back and forth, but I understand your concern. Okay? So there is, there's an effort in the direction we're seeking. And the other, the other speaker, like, Mr. Gavri, if you could just respond to the issue.
Sure. We certainly hear the concern that people state, and from a legal perspective, there is free speech. There is also substantial disruption. We have had instances where we've had comments where the district has taken action and had things taken down that we thought crossed over the line from free speech to something that we thought was creating a disruption because of anti-comment, basically. As the superintendent indicated, we are, we did discuss tonight, and we are moving forward with an analysis to see if we can revise the policy to bring it within some of the goals that people are seeking at this point, and we are actively working on that.
It seems that some of you would like to speak, so at the end of the meeting, I'll be happy to talk to you if you have other questions about this, okay?
It's a tough issue, and I know people on both sides of it, and there's a lot of emotions, and I think that as a board, we have to send a very clear message that hate is not allowed in our schools. We have a No Place for Hate program. I think we need to reinforce it at every level, from elementary to high school, because we see little pockets, but I think if we don't put a lid on it now, it'll only get worse, because we're not really doing enough about it. We're worried about free speech, or these things, it'll be too little too late, as Ms. Woodhour mentioned. So, yeah, I mean, to his credit, Mr. Prusakos wanted to put out a resolution, but he was told no. I think the board should have put out a resolution, that's my opinion. We have to take advice of council, and I don't always agree with council, but, you know, I don't want to hide behind the First Amendment on these types of things either. Unfortunately, I'm one person, speaking for myself, I can't force the board to send, and I can't force the administration to send. But, yeah, anti-hate, anti-religion, anti-anybody. We're human beings, we're all bleeding the same blood. I don't want to see it in our schools, and I think a lot of people are feeling it, and we should definitely be more proactive in teaching our students that hate is not tolerated in the way classrooms do.
Anything else? Ms. Woodhour, as far as that policy goes, I'm going to ask the administration to best track it the best they can.
Thank you.
And hopefully, we can have it by the December meeting, if it legally all falls into place. I can't promise you anything, but I think we're going to, that's our goal, because I think it is, as you said, it's something that's got to be addressed now, and I think even besides what you're saying, what was in the news, in the news today in central Jersey, how AI is being now used. Jersey, how AI is being now used to manipulate, which is another whole issue itself and should not detract from this issue at all. We have had some situations in our, in our buildings, very few, and they've been immediately addressed by the administration. I can assure you of that. As soon as it was brought to their attention, as soon as it was brought to the principals' attention, it was taken care of, and they will remain vigilant on this issue. Anyone else? Anyone else? Motion to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.